The Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minnihahacounty.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 31st at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 21st at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. This meeting is -- will be held at Carnegie Down Hall, Logan, at 235 West Tenth Street. Sorry. Action taken on the rezoning applications during the public hearing tonight are a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at or after 9:00 p.m. a.m., I'm sorry. This meeting will be held at Carnegie Down Hall, and that's located at 235 West Tenth Street. Action taken on the major amendment to a plan development during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, at or after 9:00 a.m. That meeting will be held at Carnegie Down Hall, and that's located at 235 West Tenth Street. Action taken on the preliminary plan is a recommendation which will be forwarded to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at or after 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held at Carnegie Down Hall, and that's located at 235 West Tenth Street. Okay, first on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 25th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish you have an item removed for discussion? Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If a member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on an item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the April 25th, 2022, meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 22-37 to exceed 3,600 square feet of an accessory building space requesting 7,000 square feet on the property legally described as track three, Bowles addition, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, section 19, township 101 north, range 51 west, and that is in Wall Lake Township. Petitioner and property owner is Tom Okinga. Item number three is conditional use permit 22-39 to allow a kennel on the property legally described as track one, Mueller's addition, southwest quarter, section three, township 104 north, range 48 west. That is in Logan Township. Petitioner and the landowner are James and Frances Drenth. Location is 24496481st Avenue. Item number four is conditional use permit 22-40 to transfer one billing eligibility from the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, to the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, all in section 18, township 101 north, range 47 west. That is in Valley Springs Township. Petitioner is Daniel Williams. Landowner is Ronald Williams. It's located approximately two miles southwest of Valley Springs. Did someone raise their hand back there? Okay, okay. Item number five is rezoning 22-04 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. The property legally described as track one, Dewitt's addition, southeast quarter, section 26, township 101 north, range 48 west. That is in Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Kurt Dewitt. He's also the property owner. It's about a quarter mile south of Highway 42 in the 483rd Avenue intersection in Rowena. Item number six is conditional use permit 22-41 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 5,600 square feet on the property legally described as Johnson's Track Two, the east half, the southeast quarter, section ones, township 102 north, range 50 west, Benton Township. Petitioner and property owner is Stephen Schmitz. 25673472nd Avenue is the location. Item number seven is preliminary subdivision plan 22-01 to allow the subdivision of Renner Corner addition in section nine, township 102 north, range 49 west. The petitioner is Ron Jensen. Property owner is Sorum Holdings, II LLC. It is located at the Renner intersection on South Dakota Highway 115. And item number eight, conditional use permit 22-42 to transfer one billing eligibility from the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter, to the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, all in section 30, township 103 north, range 49 west. That is in Split Rock Township. Petitioner and landowner is Lynn Olson. It's along 254th, approximately one mile east of Interstate 29. Okay, that is the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
I guess I do have a question on item seven. You know, it seems like this is the area we just had dust up about a month ago on Renner Is this just a different variation on that, or?
Would you like to move it to the regular?
I suppose. I don't want to.
Let's do that. Okay, then I will need a motion to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8.
That's my motion.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and second to approve all items except number seven on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven. Mason, do you want to?
You can go if your item is...
Yeah, you're free to go if your item's been approved, sorry.
You can stay, it's fun.
All right, Mason Stephan from the County Planning Department. So yes, this is preliminary subdivision plan 2201 to allow a subdivision at the Renner Corner. The applicant is submitting this in order to have a new commercial subdivision at the Renner Corner on SD 115. The rezoning of these properties, as Jeff was referencing, is currently in progress, and that will go before the County Commission tomorrow morning. The applicant has submitted this preliminary plan with the understanding that if the rezoning to the C Commercial District isn't approved, this preliminary plan will be obsolete. So this new subdivision plan will contain seven lots, which is a little different than what the rezoning plan had. That only had six. Currently, the lots are used as an apartment complex, vacant ag land, as you can see, and then two residential dwellings. The dwellings will be removed before any development happens. The apartment building will stay as long as possible on the property. The first property that will be developed in this area will be for a new jerky-making facility, which will be located on Lot 2, Block 1 of the proposed subdivision. Staff has reviewed all -- has reviewed section 4.01 of the Minnehaha County subdivision ordinance to determine that all requirements have been met, and the applicant has provided all the requirement information for the preliminary subdivision plan, including topographic information, cross-section of roads, grading and drainage plan, and erosion control plan. As we kind of talked last month at the rezoning request, the property will be connected to the Renner Sanitary Sewer District and be connected to the Minnehaha Community Water. Also, the property is not currently designated as floodplain, but FEMA is up in the process of upgrading their maps, and whenever Minnehaha County adopts those, this property is planned to be in the floodplain. The petitioner has submitted this drainage plan and erosion control plan that shows that the property will be approximately five feet above the new floodplain from FEMA. So once Minnehaha County adopts those new maps, the petitioner would have to submit this data to FEMA in order for the property to be taken out of the floodplain. Otherwise, once we adopt the new maps, all of our floodplain requirements will be required for any new development. The primary road through the subdivision, as you can see here, is Lindbergh Lane, and it will curve from the southwest to the northeast between the two, the county highway 130 and state highway 115. As we discussed during the rezoning, during, while adding this new road, they will be removing access, three existing accesses on the county highway and on the state highway, and the apartment building will be changed to be accessed off of this new Lindbergh Lane. And prior to the final plat being approved, the applicant will either have to construct the road to county's road, to the county road standards, or post-surgery in an amount to cover the construction cost. Engineered road plans will need to be provided, and the applicant will have to provide road signs to the county address and criteria. With that, staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan 2201, and I will take any questions.
Any questions for him?
So we did notify the two people who objected to last month's...
Yes.
...which are just to the east, right?
Yes, one, I'll go back to this map. One is actually this property right here, if you can see my mouse, so just to the east on the north, very northeast of the property, and the other one is right here across the highway on Windale Road. And there was four people who talked, but they were just from the two properties.
And so they're not here?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
That's really all I wanted to hear, actually. I just wanted to hear the difference between this and last month.
Mason, I got just one question, and maybe it's a stupid question, but Highway 130...
Yes.
Is that going to be in the floodplain, or is that above the floodplain? Do you know?
Um, that's a good question. I believe on the new map, I don't think I have it on this PowerPoint, I had it last month, the floodplain did include the highway. It was, it kind of came up from the south. So the way that the new floodplain worked was it came up this way, about right here, and came up to about here, and it kind of included all of this area that I have highlighted here, and that did include a little bit of south of the road as well, so.
Right there in town, I don't think it's flooded, but going west, you could not get to the bridge.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions, Jeff?
I'm happy.
Okay, so...
Um...
You want to have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
That.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary subdivision plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If that item got approved, you're free to go. Move on to the regular agenda. Kevin, Plan Development, Major Amendment 22-02 to amend the High Prairie Ranch Plan Development to change subarea D to subarea A on the property legally described as Lot 20 of High Prairie Ranch, in addition to the northwest quarter, section eight, township 102 north, range 49 west, Mapleton Township. David and, petitioner is David Rognus, and property owner is Dorothy.
All right, it's me again, Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. So this is another major amendment, and this is primarily a rezoning. There isn't any sort of wording changes for this request, so it's just the rezoning. It's a rezoning of this lot here in the map from subarea D to subarea A. This lot is a platted 12.9 acres in size. Subarea D largely mirrors the A1 agricultural zoning district for rules and regulation, and then the subarea A closely mirrors the rural residential zoning district. So this would be changing the property from essentially agriculture to rural residential. So some background information, this is within the High Prairie Ranch Plan Development District. It was approved in 1992 as a residential development with joint ownership and a horse stabling facility. The development was largely platted and developed as planned. You'll see here that there's the subarea A, the residential development, subarea B, which is here, the stable, subarea C would be another joint area, and then subarea D, which is the ag area that we are talking about now. Our development is right here in that subarea D. In 1999... Oh, excuse me, skipped ahead too far. All of subarea C was rezoned in 2019 to be only subarea D. Since the subarea C is mostly for parkland, for the joint ownership, it was rezoned to the agricultural use by the single owner. In 1999, a similar request to this rezoning, where we are looking at this lot, was made to rezone the area of land of the plan development into the residential use. The same preliminary subdivision plan that's being offered for this request was made in 1999 for 10 lots. I'll move over to that. So here's the subdivision plan, kind of proposed, not cemented in yet. In that 1999 request, the County Commission did not approve or deny the request, but rather was deferred indefinitely. So there was just no decision made on the item. This proposed amendment, so that's some of the background information. This proposed amendment is located approximately one and a half miles northeast of Crooks Renner exit off of Interstate 29, within the High Prairie Ranch subdivision. The High Prairie Ranch subdivision, I'll go back to the map, is located right here on the map. It has 15 houses and shares the same township access roads as what this proposed subdivision will take, make. South of the development, a quarter mile is the Vintage Village addition, which is a subdivision right here, if you see my cursor. It has approximately 40 dwellings, but accesses directly onto the county highway. This Vintage Village addition was platted prior to density zoning, and the subdivision, however, the subdivision was largely developed later in the 90s. Access to this proposed development will be required driving over one mile of township gravel roads. I did speak with Don Oshlogger from Mapleton Township about this, and his primary concern was about the development of the future roads, that they, in past subdivisions, that these roads are not always maintained to township standards. So he would like that the developer builds the roads, if this gets approved, builds the roads to township standards, and then petitions the township to accept them as part of their road maintenance. But that would include township standards of the construction of the road, driveways, culverts, also to get installed to the township. Staff does find that the concerns that were raised in the 1999 amendment request are still valid. There is currently high demand, and that's part of the reason why the petitioner has requested this development, is there is high demand for housing development in the rural area. But staff is concerned that allowing one residential subdivision may lead to other property owners wanting to subdivide their properties in the near vicinity, and this is part of the reason why I included this map. So right here, the star is the location of the property. All these red dots on the map are residential building eligibilities that have been used by a house, and green dots are residential building eligibilities that are available for use, which aren't very many of them. So you can see that this is largely built out to about as far as it can be built. And staff feels that this is the intent of the density zoning, that now this rural land here has been preserved for agricultural use until a municipality annexes and develops This proposed subdivision is located within the traditional transition area as indicated in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan, action 5.3 of the Future Land Use Chapter says to, has a action to locate residential subdivision in community-type developments where adequate services are available, including but not limited to sanitary sewer, utilities, and drinking water supplies. At this time, there isn't plans to include primarily the sanitary sewer, which is the toughest thing to include for subdivisions like this. Staff is recommending denial of the project, and I'll go over a few other photos of the site. This is looking at the south part of the project. You can see the road that leads off to the right, or the east. This is from that same corner, looking south to the existing development. It is, it is very pretty hill. You can see there's the waterway there, and you can see the green hillside there, and some of the existing roadway. As we discussed at the township, when I talked to Don, it isn't built to roadway standards, but it is wide enough that they could rebuild this road for the township standards. Another view looking kind of north, and this is at kind of the north or the top of the hill. So I'll go back to the, this map. As I mentioned, staff is recommending denial, and I am here for any questions.
Any questions for him? Not this time. Is the petitioner here?
Yep.
You please step forward and state your name and address.
Dave Rognus, 25065467th Avenue, Colton.
Any questions for him? Jeff?
Thanks for coming. Understanding some of the concerns people have, you know, about rural developments taking over all the land, about, you know, sewage, about water, about traffic, do you have some thoughts on those things?
There's a high demand for housing, and it will be built up to all the standards that's necessary, and it's far enough from the, way from the river for septic tanks, I believe. It's, I believe you've got to have 100 feet, and the very closest one is 230 or 250.
Okay, any other further questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Don Oshlogger, Mapleton Township, 6705 North Tenth Avenue. The petitioner met with me with his plot map. Obviously, I had to sign off his plot map, and we had some discussions on the, on the area. Kevin also called about it. So what happens in the township, people, most people are aware that we'll go out and develop an area like this, and the developer gets his lots sold, and everybody that buys a lot says, "Well, I bought a lot on a township road." Unnecessarily true. What we ask of the township, if this would go forward, would that, the petitioner would develop the property and develop it with an engineer, proper drainage, proper ditches, proper roadway. Actually, county standards are the standards we follow as well. Also, when that's all done, and the lots are sold, the driveways are in, we have driveway permits in our township. I don't want to go out there and, and, you know, allow driveway permits. I would rather that took place by the developer. The developer has the completed development, then their final step should be to come to Mapleton Township and petition to have that road taken into the township at that time, when everything is completed. And I stress that to Kevin as well. I think Dave and I talked about that a little bit. The additional traffic with the home, single-family dwelling, I think we have adequate roadways to support that. The other thing that we see happen is living, living next to the Blooming Sioux Falls, South Dakota, we have a lot of people that are after acreages and after these types of settings, and they're beautiful, like everybody sells them, but they're dusty. You know, what are you going to do, buy my dusty road? My road is gravel when you bought your lot, folks. I mean, we're going to try to magwater, we're going to try to take care of it, but we're going to take care of it within our budget. So frontage foot assessments are an option. We try not to do that. We're in an opt-out, so we try not to do frontage foot assessments, but some of the things to consider when they develop this, we're not opposed to it, we're not opposed to progress. We realize that there's going to be a lot of this, and there's need for it. We just want it to take place in steps that we can manage it and handle it. We've, we're sitting on 17 housing developments now. Little bit unique, a lot of townships don't take housing developments. I know Split Rock does. They got their hands full over there managing frontage foot assessments, and it's a big job, but so far, we've stayed away from frontage foot assessments, and I think the petitioner understands how we feel about it. We're here to support his desires, but also to keep in mind, if he follows those guidelines, we're okay with it. So, any questions?
Madam Chair, I just, how much of a road would they have to develop on their... No, a question for you. How much of a road would they have to build up and develop on there to make it...
Well, it's a minimum of a 25...
A minimum maintenance road there?
No maintenance road through there now.
Okay.
And that would have to come up to the county standard, which I believe is 20-foot of width, six-foot of ground, three-foot of material, and adequate drainage.
How long of a stretch is that on there? Half-mile, or?
I don't know what, is it about a half-mile down through the center? And I see they're adding a, adding a street. We would have to make sure that that access is a clear view access, much like a driveway permit. So where they're asking to put that road in there, the additional street, we would have to make sure that there's no vision issues there, but we would also make sure that that was covered correctly. I would like to see the petitioner have that engineered prior to, prior to selling lots off it, so bring an engineering proposal, not just people going out there and planting houses out there every which way, you know what I mean? So sometimes those, sometimes those developments, some of the older ones especially, they're not conducive to drainage, and people are pumping water on their neighbors, and I don't know that that would happen here because he's on a hill, so. I'm a little surprised that, I don't know about the septic systems. I think I'm a little, I'm a little bit surprised that, I think a real septic system in a lot of places that close to the river has to be a race septic system, but that's none of my business. I don't know how they'll do that. Have you checked into that? I don't, I don't know what...
It just says you've got to have 100 feet.
Sure.
To the extreme river.
We've, we've got some areas, we have a roadbed below about 10 or 12 houses in an area, and their septic systems drain in their front yards, and Western Avenue is at the bottom, and that ditch is always basically wet and loose, and then we have an issue with the roadbed. So I could see those houses up on top draining down toward that no-maintenance road where that water could be an issue. We have that in one of our developments right now, where we've actually, in wet years, had septic systems pooling in the ditch. So, some things to think about there, so I think that would be all part of an engineering study and an engineered plan, I would hope. Okay?
Any questions for him? Any questions for him?
Don, I really appreciate you being here. I, I think I see you at more of these than anyone, except maybe Adam and our other commission member that are township people. But would you expect this road to be paved then, blacktop, the one through the subdivision?
No, because it's in a, because it's in a rural area surrounded by gravel, gravel would be acceptable to us as well, as many of our, many of our developments that we maintain now are gravel. So, the challenges for us are some of the developments that are going in adjacent to blacktop roads, and the county regulations require them to go to blacktop. That's an issue for us. We, we struggle with that at times. Right now, we, we have about a half mile of blacktop that we maintain. Slip-Up Creek Road has got a half mile. We're going to be losing that with this rebuild. But it's, we don't, we don't collect enough tax revenue, and we don't, we don't have the, it's not affordable to, to be maintaining blacktop. Now, when we get into the commercial areas, like the one that was just spoke about here, I know, if I, if I may, I'll just speak to the commercial area, and the tax revenue generated from that is substantially different than a residential area. So, the developers there have brought forward the projected revenue base and the projected life of the road. And with those commercial areas going in and around Renner, what we plan on doing with those is take the, we know that there's an area that was just completed, the last building's going up, so we know what our revenue will be off of that. We know how many foot of blacktop we're going to have there, so we will have to write a resolution within our township to take the commercial blacktop. And we've agreed to do that. I think, I think the, the tax basis there is going to support that, which is much different than the residential areas that are forced to go to blacktop off of blacktop roads. It's very difficult to, to get that and maintain it.
I'm sure. So, I know that the issue with gravel going on to blacktop is that the, the cars drag gravel out on the blacktop, which then dings up the cars driving by at high speed. It's, it's going to be more of a problem later. Jim Zwieb told me a story about, they had a cul-de-sac, and they were putting in two houses, and they, they didn't want to pave it, and they allowed them to build the cul-de-sac without paving it. And then there were eight houses there, and they came to the commission and said, "When the hell are you going to pave our street?"
Yeah.
And in the meantime, it's, it's better to make them get it done correctly upfront. So, your view is that this is not a bad project?
I don't, I don't see it as, as a bad project for us. As a township, I don't see any, any problem. If it's, if it's built the, the way that we're asking it to be built, and it's completed at its time of completion, if they want to petition the township to take those roads at that time, I mean, it may or may not be on the township board. But the, the right process would be to bring this to the, to the township board and petition it. The township supervisors would go out there, they would measure it, they would, they would go through the process, and then they would write a rare solution to take it into the township. So, we had an area last year, just north, a street, little dead-end street called Beverly. So, we don't take dead-end streets anymore. We don't take cul-de-sacs. Those are problems for us. If you're going to do a cul-de-sac, we need enough room to, to turn around a motor grader. But at an area that, part of that street was old development, part of it was a more recent development, and the, and the most recent development had, was, had to have blacktop. And so, the developer sold all the lots, they, they put one lifted blacktop down, and they, they're gone. Nobody, we know who they are, we know what they did. They didn't put the second lifted blacktop. The road fell apart. Everybody comes to us. "What are you going to buy a road?" "Well, it's a township road." I'm sorry, our, our obligation stops at the gravel, and the blacktop is not ours. So, last year, we went in there, and we spent $10,000 and milled off one layer of blacktop, recycled it, put it back in, and, and put gravel in. The project cost $10,000, just for, you know, I don't know how many feet it was, even less than a quarter mile, but we, we did it to, I mean, we've been fighting this for the 10 years that I've been on the township board, and it's just like, it was the right thing to do. We needed to get it taken care of, and we'll adopt that extra footage into the township. And, you know, we have happy residents now, but we don't want that to happen in a development like this. We want the development to be completed, and we'd ask that, at that time, the petitioner would bring that to the board and, you know, get the roads accepted at that time.
I agree with Jeff. You had the right conversations between the petitioner and the township, so that you can get things right the first time around, so you don't have problems after the fact.
Right.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Mike Wendland, 411 Kringle Avenue, Baltic. I am here on behalf of Brian Hefty. He's not able to make it this evening. He is the adjacent landowner to the north of this proposed property, and he just wanted me to come this evening, and he is in support of moving forward and approval of this, and has no issues with it. So, he just wanted me to pass along and express his, his approval on this.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to this item? Guess I'll close the floor.
Oh, ma'am, can I ask Kevin one more question?
Sure.
He was saying 100 feet away from a creek or anything for septic tanks for runoff and all that, you know, is there any law in the state or county-wise, anything like that or not?
I would.
Away from a creek or?
That sounds probably about correct. I can't recall if this area is in any sort of watershed protection area, or if that follows more the floodplain off to the east. And that would be the one thing that might cause a wrinkle into this, because if it is in a watershed protection area, the septic systems would have to be, have a state engineered, approved plans. Usually, that means either a mountain system or engineered soils being put in, and it might need that anyway based on percolation tests or how the grade of the land works, so.
How about once the, the development to the south there, that's along the county road there, is that all septic there?
Yes, everything would be septic, yes. I don't know how many of them have been engineered or just designed to state standards with the perk tests.
Answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners?
Can I ask the proponent another question? Dave, have you guys made improvements to the project from when it was, from 1999 until now?
No, it's just.
It's the same.
Same thing.
Same thing.
It's been agricultural land.
And what, what's the price range of these one-acre houses on lots there?
I don't know.
They're not going to be tiny houses for low income?
No, no. No, they aren't going to be junk houses. They'll be nice. I shouldn't say junk, starter. Housing, you know the housing market now, and it blows me away, so I really have no idea. When they're talking 250 to 290 for a starter home, I'm just, I haven't kept up on it.
Any other questions for him? Jeff?
I, I sort of feel like this project needs further consideration by perhaps the whole commission. I'm not sure it deserves to be voted up or down at, at this time, so I wonder if we should punt like they did in 1999.
Becky.
I realize that this is only 10 units, and I look at this map, and they've been, all were there. I am, I'm just a little troubled by all of these septic systems so close to the river. And I understand that this is not the petitioner that put all these homes in, but I am concerned if we are adding to a problem. It's only 10, I realize that, but then it's 10 more, and 10 more, and 10 more. And so, I'm just concerned about the amount of septic systems so close to the river. And we don't know for sure if it's in a watershed protection area.
Is in flood zone, you mean, or no?
No, watershed protection.
That's where the aquifer, underneath, for well water and stuff.
Not sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for him?
But Jeff, back to your question, when High Prairie was built, they had covenants, so it had to be certain houses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Randall brought up an excellent point there, and are you anxious to get started on this project, Dave? I mean, I, I sort of feel like I'd like to, to make sure that we do protect the, the land and the water. I know that cattle running in the, in the Big Sioux are probably more of a problem than a tourist picture, but at some point, the system kind of breaks down if we just add more and more and more.
If I may, if, if this is something that does get approved, I know that Don Oshlager mentioned that they have engineered roads and things like that. This type A project would have to get what's called a final development plan before any lots get plotted out, which isn't the same as this, where there's an up and down approval, just to make sure, kind of like the preliminary subdivision plan, to make sure that all the roads are laid out correctly, all the drainage is done. So, things like maybe a septic system, an idea would come up during that time, too, a better idea of how a septic system would be able to handle.
So, Kevin, if we approve it, there is perhaps more review down the road?
There would be, yes, there would be further review on making sure, like I said, the engineering is done, the drainage is done. That's part of the project would be reviewed again.
I'll make a motion to approve this project.
Do I have a second?
Died for lack of a second.
Died for lack of a second. Do I have any other motions? Any other comments?
Anybody here?
I was just wondering, if we deferred it or anything like that, if we got any more.
We could defer.
I mean, if we deferred it to next month, would we get more explanation or not, like, like for septics and all that? I mean, or is it worth it or not?
Kevin, could you drill down to where the septic system is?
I mean, are we going to gain anything, I guess, if we defer it? I mean.
Yeah, I guess if you were to defer to try to get more information, you could. I'm not sure how helpful or not that could be, because we're talking percolation tests. Yeah.
Would it be beneficial for him to get an engineer? To start this process?
At this point, maybe, maybe not. It's pretty early in the process. He, you know, they, they've gone through, you know, as I said, the, this plan here that he presented, it, it really is something they've used before. It could just be a concept plan. It has, it has an idea at least, it's not final by any means.
I make a motion to defer for a month? Or should it be longer than that?
What would you like to see on it, Jeff, I guess? What would you like to see him come back with?
I'd like to see, you know, some assurance that the, the septic system was not going to increase the load going through.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see it's not in a watershed either, I guess, or an aquifer, I guess is.
So, would you like it to be more than one month?
I, I guess I don't know. I don't know how long that, that takes, I guess. I don't.
Here, could I just make a comment?
Doug?
You know, I just think, as backed up as everything is in today's world, you know, a month is, they probably wouldn't even get on their books.
Yeah.
I think this might have to be extended till August, because this is, we're talking, you know, this is a major deal.
It is.
And to get it done right, I think, I'd like to see, I'd just say to defer till August.
That was my motion.
Second to that.
I'll second that. I, I think that's a good timeframe. I guess if he's got it something earlier than that, I guess he can come back earlier than that, too.
If it's January, I won't be here anymore.
Okay, I have a motion and second to defer this item till August. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. We'll move on to item 10.
What do you want me to come back with?
I think what we need is some, some discussion on the water, and that is the, the river, the, the subterranean water, and, and how it's going to interact with the septic systems. And, and you know, there, you could always have a sanitary sewer district that incorporated all of those dots on the, on the thing. You know, Renner has a sanitary sewer district, and then they pump it down to Sioux Falls. I think that Crooks has one as well. I don't know that, I, I think they might pump it to Sioux Falls, not yet?
Not yet.
Engineers haven't done it yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I think let's stay in touch with our planning and zoning people, and I'll talk to the water people that I know.
Okay, that I'm, item has been deferred. So, we'll move on to item number 10. It's a rezoning, 2205, to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the Rural Residential District. The property legally described has a southeast quarter, northwest quarter. There is an exception of H-1 and H-2, the end of exception. Section 1, Township 103 North, Range 50 West, that is in Lyons Township. Petitioner and owner is Northeast Investments LLC, location 47137250th Street. Mason?
Hi, yeah. Good evening again, Mason Stephan from the Planning Department. The petitioner is requesting to rezone approximately 35 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the Rural Residential District. I'll move to the map here. The Coachman's Manor Mobile Home Park, which is on the north side of this property, has existed since before the current zoning regulations for Minnehaha County. In 1985, the north portion of the property, which includes the current park, was rezoned from the now nonexistent Mobile Home Residential Zoning District to the Rural Residential District. Along with that, a few months later, the property that is requesting to be zoned, rezoned today, was rezoned to the A1 Agricultural District. And finally, on the north side of this property, you can't quite see the access, but two additional properties use the same access to the current Mobile Home Park, and they are a single-family dwelling and a commercial manufacturing operation. The portion of this property that is requesting to be rezoned is a wooded area along an intermittent stream, as well as a cropland, as you can see on the north side. Only the part on the north side of that intermittent stream would be used for the Mobile Home Park expansion. Additionally, if the rezoning request is approved, the petitioner would also need to apply for a conditional use permit, as a Mobile Home Park is a conditional use in the Rural Residential Zoning District. Questions with, about the access, the one, the single access into this property, wastewater management, drainage management, and any other pertinent questions would all be addressed in the conditional use permit process. As I stated, one of the concerns staff has with this As I stated, one of the concerns staff has with this property is that there is only the one access off the highway, which would see an increase in traffic if the rezoning was approved and more mobile homes were moved onto the property. During, like I said, during the CUP process, the petitioner would need to explain how the park expansion would be accessed and how the roads and lots within the park would be oriented. Also, as we were kind of just discussing with the other property, the south portion of this property below the intermittent stream is in the water source protection area, which restricts some land uses in order to preserve groundwater quality. One of the prohibited uses in the water source protection area is a sewage disposal pond. And if you see on the map here, this is the current disposal pond for the Mobile Home Park up here. About the top half of this is within the water source protection area. The current pond was, has been existing since the Minnehaha County zoning regulations were adopted. So this is, the current pond is a grandfathered use and therefore was allowed to continue. However, if the Mobile Home Park was to expand, that would increase the amount of sewage on the property and therefore any new sewage pond expansion or new pond would need to meet the zoning requirements, including not being located in the water source protection area. Finally, the future land use plan within the envisioned comprehensive plan does designate the Baltic exit as a commercial industrial growth area. However, there has been very limited commercial slash industrial growth at the Baltic exit. Most of the northwest and northeast are ag ground and on the east side, there is the Baltic gas station and as I stated, the commercial manufacturing process, but most of the exit is undeveloped ag ground as of now. Therefore, allowing expansion of the existing Mobile Home Park into this land that is currently used for agriculture won't affect any future commercial or industrial uses at the exit. With that, staff is still recommending approval as we feel the rezoning conforms to the goals and policies of the envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan and recommends approval of rezoning twenty-two oh five to rezone the property from the A-one agricultural district to the rural residential district. And I'll just go through some quick pictures here. So here's the access on the top part of the property, so that county highway off the interstate is up on the very north side. And this, it comes in right here and forks out. So this east access forks out to the Paul Sunderman Manufacturing and then this forks down into this road right here in the Mobile Home Park. Here's just another picture looking back towards the Mobile Home Park. So here's the access on the east side going up to the Sunderman Manufacturing Operation and here is that other access here. Here's the Sunderman Manufacturing. And then here is the actual property requesting to be rezoned. So as you can see down here, the sewage disposal pond is about right here in this picture and you can see the trees along the intermittent stream. And here is a picture of the crop ground. That would be where most of the, or most of the expansion would take place. And then here is the access that currently comes back to the, to the proposed expansion. And as I said, that would all be addressed in the conditional use permit process. But one of the concerns that staff does have is that the one access currently is all the way up here and if you only have the one access all the way down through here, up to anything over here, that would be a concern that staff has. So the petitioner would need to submit some sort of road map to explain how that is going to be better accessed. With that, I believe that's the last picture, so I will go back to the location map and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for him?
Yeah, Madam Chair, how many mobile homes are in there right now? Is there like thirty, forty?
Yeah, something like that. I think I counted, it looked like there was about forty to forty-two currently and fifty, I think, is about what could be in there roughly, from my rough count.
Okay. If they were to put another road in there or another driveway access in there, is there enough space between that one for the county wise? Isn't, don't they need to have a thousand feet or something between?
Yeah, I guess the, the new
Would there be enough room to go to the west or more to get in there or not?
Yeah, I guess the new access wouldn't necessarily add a new access off of the highway. It would be the one access off the highway with potential of adding a a new, another road within the subdivision here.
Okay, coming, using the main one there and then just coming to the west?
Yeah, so you have a loop in here instead of just having one that dead ends down here.
Okay.
All the way down. So it would, more than, you are correct with the one thousand feet and I don't believe there would be enough room on the property.
I was just wondering for emergency vehicles or something to get in there, you know, to, to get around and all that. That's the main concern, I guess.
Okay, any other questions for him? It's not at this time. Is the petitioner here? You please step forward and state your name and address.
Nick Johansson, fifty-seven sixteen East Red Oak Drive. I'm with Airheart Griffin and Associates. We're civil engineers and land surveyors here representing the petitioner. Yeah, I think as has been discussed tonight, the county and the city in particular is in need of affordable housing and that's kind of what this, this would represent. You know, Amazon and things on the north side of town. Workers there would potentially use this site. So I am in agreement, the site presents a lot of challenges from an engineering perspective. We have a big drainage way coming through there, there's tons of wetlands. The existing sewage pond is in an area that is not suitable to have one in there. The plan would be to relocate that or improve it. You know, I've had preliminary discussions with a lot of individuals on this project so far, the county. I've talked to the state of South Dakota about the sanitary sewer and the septic. Was this original pond permitted? I've had tons of conversations with them about that. I've had discussions with Community Water. In adding the units to this site, they have capacity to service the site with water. I've also talked to wetland delineators and geotechnical investigation people who would potentially be working on this project with me. You know, I, I think that those issues can all be worked through. I think we can, we can figure out a way to solve these issues. And access has been a large one talked about here tonight. And that access on the east side, like he was discussing, that's currently there, yes, that's an access site, but there is access. There is a potential access on the north end, like he was pointing out, to get between the new development and the old one. I have had discussions with Wayne Larson, who is a neighbor, he lives right there at the farm, about adding one potentially to the highway, which would require us to cross this property. They're in the process of combining, or not combining, planting and farming. And so I haven't had a chance, other than talking to him on the phone, to talk to him face to face to discuss this project and discuss access and what we can do from that perspective. I'd be open to any, any questions that you have about those issues.
Any questions for him?
I guess, do you have a plan for road system in there, like we were saying?
We've done some concepts, none that I would, you know, potentially want to show you, but yes, it's using the crop ground that's there. You know, the topography works for what we want to do with the drainage and what goes through there. With a rough idea of number of units that we'd be adding, depending on how much of that east area we'd have to use for the sanitary sewer treatment ponds, lagoons. You know, it's going to be eighty, ninety, a hundred, it just depends. Depends on the road system and what we can do to get around those other issues, so.
Madam Chair?
I'm just, I'm glad you've thought about all of those problems. Potential problems or challenges, maybe is a better way to put it, related to septic, water, safety. Because those are all, those are all concerns and especially if we're talking eighty to one hundred units.
Right.
It's a lot.
Absolutely, I'm in the business of public safety. I mean, I do it every day. We do tons of development around Sioux Falls, tons of residential development, so it's nothing new. So we would bring in the right people. If we don't have the expertise on the lagoon system, we would bring in somebody that does. I think we'll be able to handle it in-house, but that, that would be, you know, something that we could do, so.
Okay, any other questions for him? Jeff?
I'm having trouble finding words.
Okay.
Kevin, if we approve it at this point, it still comes, it has to be upgraded as far as the vision that's going in there before it comes to us, or is this, I'm sorry, is it, is this the, are we giving birth to the whole project? Or is this just a step one?
This would just be considered a step one, so this is just allowing it to go to rural residential, which would allow them eventually to do the Mobile Home Park. So like I said, during that process, they would have to bring all this information that he was describing. So this is kind of just the first step of the process to approve them to eventually do that.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a statement, it's not to anybody, but just sitting here looking at this and for years driving by that. You know, if this was a feedlot and somebody wanted to expand that where that is situated, I think the whole neighborhood would be up in arms about the pollution and runoff. That's what really scares me about this whole project here. So I, I could not support this right now.
Anyone else?
Can I address that?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
In discussions with the state of South Dakota, the Department of Natural Resources, they have a set, set, set of standards to control pollution and control sanitary sewer runoff. There's a, there's a very specific permit process that we'll have to go through. My guess is this will be a two-celled lagoon type of a system where it would be, you know, it would be released after the permitted period of time. It's going to have to be monitored. The discharge will be monitored and tested to meet all their standards for BOD and all kinds of other, other issues that would leave, that would leave the lagoon site, so. I, I think there are legitimate concerns that you have, but I think going through the state process and having it designed the way that it will be designed will eliminate the worries that you have in that regard, so.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Please step forward and state your name and address.
John Breen, four seven one three seven two hundred and fiftieth street, lot fifty-six. I actually live in this Mobile Home Park. The pictures, the first picture that he showed of the entrance, if you look at that, there's a big pothole, actually multiple potholes. This, this trailer park has been there for ages and the road hasn't had anything to do with it. It hasn't been updated. The fire department can't tell where, what trailer is what because they're not marked. And this has all happened since Northeast Investment has taken over this trailer park. I've got pictures of a trailer down on the bottom row, which looks like is going to be the main road. That is, it's all terraced. And the back end, I can almost walk underneath it on cinder blocks and not strapped. I don't know who has to monitor the lagoon if this goes forward, but as of right now, Northeast Investment can't keep the trailer park out. Most of the lights don't work. There's a lot of people that get state assistance and he's charging them a late fee when they have no control when that stuff's coming in. The state dictates that and he's trying to charge them, it, it's trees are all over down there and they're still not picked up from the storm that we had, what, almost three weeks ago? Nothing's been done to them. I'm just concerned that, you know, someone's got to monitor the lagoon if we, if you guys allow this to pass and are they going to monitor it? Because they don't even move snow when it's, when we've gotten two, three inches of snow because they go off what's in Sioux Falls. There's a big difference from Sioux Falls up to that Baltic exit. I move snow all winter. There's a big difference just north Sioux Falls and south Sioux Falls. The, the fire department has a heck of a time finding anything in there because it doesn't say lot one starts up top and lot fifty-six is on the bottom. So they pull in there and they got to drive around all over to try and find lots and most of the trailers aren't marked. He can't keep track of who's paid lot rent. I usually pay mine like two days before the beginning of the month and all of a sudden he'll hang a note up on my door saying I owe him forty-five bucks. I'll call him, what do you, what do I owe you forty-five bucks for? Well, I'm not sure. Did you pay your lot rent? I go, yeah, I got it right here on my bank statement that you already cashed my check. I just think there's got to be a lot done to the trailer park that's there before they're allowed to expand. You guys got any questions? Want to see a picture of that trailer, I got it on my phone?
Any questions for him?
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to this item? Guess I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
Seems like there are issues beyond our pay grade on this. It's, we've got, that road picture there looked like an abandoned hunting road. I appreciate Doug's comments on the, on the, if it were a feedlot. But we do also need low-income housing. We've had some crappy trailer parks in Sioux Falls over the years. We still do.
Any other comments?
What about you, Bonnie? What do you, what wisdom can you give us?
Well, I kind, I understand the situation and I'm also a real estate appraiser and the prices right now are just unfathomable to me. I can figure them out half the time. I know that there's housing needed. I also sit on a nonprofit that we deal with homeless families, so I know some of that, how that works. I also know that a lot of the items that you were addressing should be addressed with actually the owner of the property, so to speak, not to say that they're going to do anything. And I also know that you can't do it alone. You know, your neighbor should be part of that whole process. It's a tough one. And with the cost of living right now and the cost of everything else, if everybody can figure that out, when you go to the, wherever you go, I mean, everything's going up, seems like there isn't anything that's marginally staying within affordable housing or anything else for that matter. I don't think this is a bad project, is what I'm saying. I'm just saying that there's a lot of loose ends for me, that's all.
There are. I guess we're going to be deciding things later on down the road if we just approve the rezoning, right? We still have to do a final plan and all that then, right?
Is that correct?
Correct, right? We're just trying to rezone it from A-one to rural residential.
Correct, and yeah, so like it'll be a conditional use and in the conditional use, a park intended for the placement of mobile homes, it specifically lists that they have to have a plan showing the layout of the park, including road systems, spacing, wastewater, all that stuff is listed as what's required for a conditional use permit. So they would have to submit all of that when we ended up doing the conditional use permit. So that would all be taken care of then, I think.
So our decision is just based on the rezoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioners?
Wake up, you people.
Do you have a motion?
I'm just thinking, it's just, we're just on a rezoning plan of it right now. I guess we're going to have a final say on it down the road here in a few months or whatever, when they ever come back with a final plan on it. I guess we're going to have to decide if it's doable or not. I guess we're going to have to decide if it's doable or not, then, I guess. I guess, I guess I make a motion to approve it, the rezoning of it, from A1 to Rural Residential.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and second to approve the rezoning of 2205 from A1 Agricultural, Rural Residential District. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion does not pass.
Can we do a roll call vote on that?
Yes, we probably should. Jeff?
Well, let me, can I speak to?
Sure, go ahead. We might as well speak before.
You know, Mr. Johansson, I'm really counting on you to carry the ball and take some of the input we've had here. We do need the housing, and I do expect to see reasonable improvements when this comes before us again. I'm going to vote aye.
Mike?
No.
Adam?
Yes.
Becky?
No.
No.
Okay. Three noes to two yeses, so motion is denied.
So item number 10 has been denied. Okay. Any other old business? New business?
No.
All those are dated, motion adjourned.
Just meant for new business, are we moving next month?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sorry, I'll mention that. So for new month, or for new business, the June 27th, I believe, County Commission meeting will be held at Carnegie Town Hall, 235 West 10th Street. This room will be closed for construction, and the new room upstairs will not be ready yet. By July, it should be ready. So that'll be the only meeting that's changed for you guys, so.
Adequate parking there, Mason.
Yeah, yes, there's a parking lot to the east, I believe, side of that building. So there should be all parking there. And City of Sioux Falls knows, that will be there, so.
There's no cost on the meters after 5 o'clock.
Any motion adjourned? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.